Good evening, welcome to the January 28th regular city council meeting. With that, D. Styles Elliott, our city clerk, will you please call roll?
Mayor Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Delara.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerin.
Here.
Councilmember Gaither. Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember Parks. Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Gaither requested to be excused for this meeting, so would someone like to make a motion?
Some of second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, it's passed. Onto mayor's community announcements. The first one is, and this is something I think is pretty, pretty exciting. On January 7th, we released online permitting to where you can actually go online. City Public Works, Community Development, and Fire Departments have implemented electronic permitting software for online applications, including billing permits, fire permits, variance applications, and more. And as of this afternoon, we had 43 permits that have been submitted online. This is something that we're hoping that it's a way to be able to streamline the process and help people not have to come into the office to be able to do your, do your online permits. And so this is something to look forward to. In fact, I was going through the list and I see one that this summer I'll be applying myself personally for an online permit for. So I'm, so I'll get to go through this process also. But to learn more, you can go to pullman-wa.gov/permits. For Parks Recreation, registration for winter and spring activities at Parks Recreation, Pullman Parks Recreation is still available. You can view the activity guide and register at pullmanparksandrec.com. For Neil Public Library, there is a garden talk on Tuesday, so come to Neil Public Library the first Tuesday of every month from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. for presentations on a variety of garden topics presented by WSU Master Gardeners. The topic on Tuesday, February 4th is Mason Jar Hydroponics, I should say. And for more information, you go to pullman-wa.gov/garden-talk. The Pullman Library also, and this is because of work of the Friends of Neil Public Library, Neil Public Library now offers free notary services. We know a number of people in town have challenges of doing notary. And so from Tuesdays, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., this is being done. And the Friends of Neil Public Library, the ones that actually help pay for the training for this notary service opportunity. And to schedule an appointment, you can go to pullman-wa.gov-notary. So a lot of things there. In addition, it's, it's that time of the year, so VITA's, IRS certified volunteers will be offering free help with federal tax returns. And this is going to be at the Neil Public Library from February 15th and February 22nd. Those are both Saturdays from 10:00 to 4:00. And that's a free offering for, for tax help, which is great. And for, if you want to see more listings of community events, you can visit the city's tourism page at visitpullman.com/events. So a lot of exciting things that way. And then I have one last, as a part of the mayor's announcement, is that today is the last meeting for Mike Heston with his retirement. So Mike, if you could come up and we'll go to the podium. So Mike, he got hired from the city of Pullman, 10/9 of 1996. So that's 28 years ago. And prior to that, he came from WSU's Fire Department. In total, he has 43 years of service within fire services. His retirement is coming up Friday, February 7th. There is an event at Fire Station 1 at 10 o'clock related to this. And, and Mike has been one that as, as a fire chief has not only been an exemplary leader within our community as a, as a city employee, but also within the community with Lions Club, Boy Scouts, and a number of other areas that he has serviced. And, you know, I understand that, you know, Mike's planning on, not too long after he graduate, after he, I say graduates, after he retires, is he's, he's heading to visit his latest grandkid. And I mean, if, if that's what you wanted, I'm sure we could have given you some time off to be able, just to do that. But I wanted to read this, "Appreciation of Mike Heston. In recognition for your outstanding leadership, unwavering dedication, and exceptional service to the city of Pullman and its residents, the city and the residents wish to extend our deepest appreciation. Your commitment to safeguarding our community has left an indelible mark, and your legacy of service will continue to inspire us for years to come." So congratulations, Mayor. Thank you. Did you have to say something?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. It's been a privilege and an honor all these years. So thank you for the support from city council every year for the Fire Department. It's been outstanding and all the memories and friendships I won't forget. So I'm not leaving, I'll still be around the community to help serve from time to time. But I am learning how to say no, so, so thank you very much.
So the next item on the agenda is non-agenda-related community comments. This agenda item is the first of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of the elected officials. Specifically, this item is reserved for public comment concerns or the information not related to a previous public hearing or final agenda item. This, comments will not exceed 30 minutes in total. Comments are to be directed to the mayor, the city council is a body. No comments should be directed to an individual council member. With that, would anybody like to provide public comments? Please, so please come forward.
Hello, everyone, my name's William. I am, I'm the owner of Shaget's Bagels in Moscow, Idaho. We're probably the only Jewish bagelery in North Idaho. And, you know, that comes with its cost. I want to share with you what happened over Hanukkah, right? So I basically decided I was going to give out free Hanukkah bags to students, to kids and their, Jewish kids and their friends. These are the comments I got, and this honestly spurs from the two council members, Eric Farajahn and you, ma'am. "Good for you, sounds like you're doing great. I'm guessing the response from the alt-right conservative friends is because they're generally more down with genocide. It does sound like you're in La La Land, but who isn't? Happy holidays." "Go ahead and keep all those, why even make this post knowing that genocide that they're perpetuating? Nobody's trying to see that crap." "Be topical, only one genocide going on now. Disgusting to offer up these cookies while her kin are offering up 223s to Palestinian kids' skulls. Also, I wear that badge of antisemite with honor because if you haven't been called antisemite by now for not supporting this genocide, then you're naive at best and a rat at worst." That was directed at me. So I wanted to read some here for you guys. "For those of you who don't know, yesterday was Yom HaShoa, a day we remember where 6 million Jews were slaughtered because the world stood silent. Today, we're going to hear a statement by Mr. Farajahn when I presented him with hard facts researched from the US British Military, US and British military, that there is no genocide going on Gaza." Here's the statement. "My position is to represent the voices of the community, not to make assumptions about what a ceasefire might mean for the broader Middle East, nor to dictate specific foreign policy solutions, as if moral responsibility can be sidestepped. Eric Farajahn is perfectly fine looking the other way as Jewish students and community members, Mike himself, are repeatedly attacked by his ignorance, because of his ignorance. This dangerously echoes how Europe looked the other way as Jews were rounded up without even asking why. Silence in the face of oppression isn't neutrality, it's complicity. These are the words of a fellow Jewish community member, not mine."
Thank you for your time.
Is that it, right?
That's, yeah.
All right. I, just one thing, I just wanted to let you guys know. I'm, email you guys that document that I emailed Eric here, and you should contain your email boxes.
Thank you for your time. Your comments, next person, please.
Good evening, my name's Jane Napi, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about the Montessori School of Pullman. We have been in Pullman since 1968, so we're 56 years old. And we have, we started in a basement of a teacher's house, and we have now grown into a three-classroom school here in Pullman. I want to share a little bit about our struggles recently. Since the start of this school year back in August, I feel like I have been fighting for the life of the school. We are struggling with the fact that a lot of Pullman community think that when PCM, Pullman Community Montessori, closed down, we also closed down, and we did not. We are, we were never business-related with them. The fact that we were in the same building, we have the word Pullman and the word Montessori in our name is probably the, the problem with that. So I've been fighting and doing all kinds of marketing to get the name back out there that we are still open. We are also now struggling with the fact that we are in the building of Gladish Culture and Community Center, and they are having difficulties with heating. And so I am trying daily to get waivers from licensing. Licensing governs childcare centers. And so I'm fighting with them to get waivers to be able to have space heaters in the classroom, which are not normally allowed. I feel that that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And you do have openings, my understanding is, for, for children?
We do, we have very, very low enrollment this year.
Yeah. So as a childcare center, there are openings in Pullman?
Right.
The next, is there anyone else who'd like to provide community comments? So if you could please come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my name is Michelle Kelly, I'm the owner of Michelle's Closet Downtown. I just wanted to come back and readdress the council. I came here in August, I don't know if you guys remember, warning that six businesses were on critical funds and would probably be closing shortly. Now in December, three of those businesses have closed, and three more are about to still close. I know that the construction has been subsided since the 1st of November, but I wanted to make the council and the city staff aware that foot traffic has actually decreased since the opening of Maine. My own personal foot traffic was at 70% in October, it went to 80%. And that's, that's an 80% decrease from my historical foot traffic. I've been tracking it since COVID, and it went down to 85 in December. Right now, I'm sitting back up about 80% of my regular, sorry, so 20% of my regular foot traffic, down 80% in my previous five years. And that your downtown is still struggling. A lot of the businesses actually feel that potentially the staff and the council don't care about them because of how much they're struggling. They have taken home loans and E-Lochs to keep their businesses open. They've depleted their retirement funds, and the sales and the business is not coming back. Some businesses will not come to talk to you because their fear of reprimand. Some businesses have spoken out and asked for help, and in return have been, either had business turned away from their establishment or things like that. Some of us businesses even put on markets and things to help ourselves get more foot traffic downtown. And once they became successful, all of our permits were revoked, and we couldn't do those farmers' markets and stuff downtown. So I plead that you guys come, see downtown, see how everybody is trying to thrive and work past the construction, because it's not over for many of us, and we all love Pullman.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide, please come forward?
Hi, guys. All right. So I just want to second what she said, but I'm going to go on to a whole another tangent. So, good evening, my name is Dominic. Some of you guys may know me as a modern plantsman. I own a small business in downtown Pullman selling houseplants and accessories to those plants. I started in Colfax in 2019, where I also served as a president of the Colfax Downtown Association for two years. And I've spent the last five years fully invested in our region as a business owner, as a homeowner, and as a citizen, a community member of the Palouse. Since moving my business to Pullman in 2023, I've been forced to move my business three separate times. And just this week, I learned that I may have to move again. I don't believe that this is just my problem, it reflects a bigger issue with how Pullman supports small businesses. Small businesses like mine struggle to find stability. The barrier for entry is too high. Affordable, affordability, long-term commercial spaces downtown are hard to secure, and businesses keep getting pushed around. If this is happening to me after five years in business, imagine how impossible it feels for someone just starting out. When small businesses don't succeed, the whole community suffers. Fewer jobs, lost tax revenue, and downtown, a downtown that loses its identity. If we don't take action, we risk becoming a town without small business diversity, and that, that's a path towards economic decline. I want to encourage a few things for you guys to do. First is read 13 Ways to Kill Community. It's a fascinating book, and it highlights mistakes that small towns make that drive away businesses, many of which we're seeing here in Pullman. Advocate for small businesses by working with county commissioners to prioritize funding. If WSU and larger organizations can secure private donor support or federal support, I don't see why Pullman can't do the same. Review ordinances and strategies from other successful small towns. There's no, there's no need to reinvent the wheel, we just need to find solutions that exist. Pullman has the potential to be a place where small businesses thrive, but we need real support and action. I hope you take these steps to make it happen. Thank you guys for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone else like to provide a comment? Please.
My, so, sorry, I'm a little nervous and everything, I usually don't, it's usually late, late at night when I do this. But I'm also a business owner here in Pullman. I've been here for like 20 something years, and I, I understand what they're saying. It's kind of terrible out there. It like really is, it just sucks. And I, I get in the mud, I, I'd be out late at night, I go out and pass out flyers, I talk to people, I run around and do things. And, and one of the things that I'm mainly not seeing is a lot of people. But I do see a lot of closed stores, you know? I mean, you can go, people can get real estate anywhere here. So I don't know what the answer is, but I definitely think somebody that has a higher education, that's smarter than me, know what to do. Because I've been here, like I said, for 20 something years. And I've, I've, in the business that I've do, done, I've thrown huge events. And now it's like, you know, I'm, I'm good if I pop one off once a month, maybe. And it's just sad, and it sucks, and it stresses you out of side your head, and you continually think, what am I doing wrong, what could I do better, how can I make this happen? And then you talk to other people and you go, oh, man, that's happening to them too? It's not happening for them too? And so it can't just be me or just that singular one person, it has to be something else that's weird. You know, I was, you know, I, I watched this video the other day of all this like alcohol being bought, and it's like shopping carts and shopping carts of it being bought. And I thought to myself, as I was watching that video, it was here, it was a video in Pullman. And I just thought, how much of that alcohol is going to 21-year-olds? And how much is it going to underage kids? You know? I just think about these people that did put their whole life savings into their business, and now it's closing down because, you know, they're upset about they can't get a permit for this, or this, or, I don't know what the permits are for, I don't know, they just be telling me stuff. So somebody should come sit down and talk to them and figure it out, you know, because it sucks. Thank you guys for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to provide comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to city council member comments, and we'll start with councilmember Fagerin.
Thank you, I just want to acknowledge all the business voices in the room. I do hear you, I know it's a struggle, we all have been hearing it. I am shopping and going downtown as much as I can, but I just want everybody listening, and everybody in Pullman is that, listen to the business owners, they need the traffic. It's not going to help if six of us there are going to start shopping or consistently. It's going to require a lot more folks, and so please, listen to the business owners. Let's go shop downtown and support our businesses. Thank you for being here, I appreciate you.
Councilmember Parks?
Hi, yep, excuse me, I echo what councilmember Fagerin just said. And as a member of the DPA Downtown Pullman Association, we did just install or hire a new executive director, Bobby Ryder. And one of her and the board's big goals is to get some more grant funding so that the DPA can offer funds for businesses, both activities and facade improvements and things like that. So we'll just keep working as hard as we can, but I appreciate you coming and making your comments public. That's very, very helpful. And then as far as Jane from the Montessori School, I want to reiterate that as well. Gladish is struggling, but that school has been here, like she said, for a very long time, and it serves a very vital purpose. I have friends whose children are, go there, and so, and my children almost went there a long time ago. So if you can just pass the word to any of your friends who have preschoolers, that would be really helpful. If we can get kind of a community chain of communication regarding the Montessori School, that would be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
I'm not going to repeat what, what both my colleagues just said, but I certainly endorse everyone going downtown, whether to eat, whether to shop, whether to enjoy the new environment, get people down there, it's worth the trip. And there is lots of parking, so it's going to be beautiful once the spring hits, so, thank you.
Free parking.
Councilmember Guido? Councilmember Weller?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. You know, it's, it's tough, I wasn't going to say something. But of course, when prominent business owners come, it warrants, it motivates something to be said. I don't know the answer, it's difficult hearing, and being able to say, of course, you know, people go down shop, but seeing everything from, you know, shopping at Michelle's Closet when it was in a different location, seeing Dominic's, you know, shop when it was in Colfax, and then buying several plants because I kept killing them. And then going in as Santa and all this other stuff, seeing how important and how it impacts everyone. And then of course, DJ Goldfinger, I mean, you're, you're an icon in our city. I, I don't know what the answer is, I think it's difficult just to say, let's all just shop downtown. I, there's a number of different things, I think, that may be adding to this, whether that's, that's the construction, whether that's less enrollment or whatnot, but none of it actually solves the problem. I think the best that we can do is talk with all of you, try and brainstorm what would be a good solution, and work with our departments and each other to try and find a better solution than, than what's already been tried. I'm not sure what to do. But I think working with all of you will be the only thing that, that will solve it. So I just want to thank you three that came in. Sorry, Dominic, I know it's, I, we can talk later.
Okay, I'm wondering if I can ask questions, make a proposal?
Not, not at this, just as a part of the meeting?
We can talk offline, yeah. I, I just wanted to say, and of course, I need to buy another plant, because of course, my new one is now dead. So I'll be coming in and seeing you anyway. But I want to thank you, of course, as anybody, everybody's already said, for coming in here, and I think I will be stopping in to each of your businesses to talk to you, one-on-one. And I'll bring my notepad and see what, what we can kind of brainstorm. So I promise you, I'll be doing that within the next week, so.
Councilmember Delara?
No comment.
The next item is city council future agenda requests. Is there any council members that would like to request anything for a future agenda item? Seeing none, we're on to community comments on final action items. This agenda item is the second of two opportunities during this meeting for public to bring comments to the attention of elected officials on an agenda item that the city council will take final action on at this meeting. Excluded items are public, where public comment has previously been, previously been accepted. This agenda items for comments does not exceed 30 minutes in total. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council as a body. No comments should be directed to an individual council member. Is there anyone who'd like to provide community comments on any of the final action items? Seeing none, we'll then go on to confirmation of appointment. And before you, I have recommendation that I'm bringing forward as for our new fire chief. We, we heard earlier from our current fire chief that's retiring, and so the recommendation of Brett Nash. And I know I had Mayor Protem at the time that participated in those, the sister one wasn't able to attend. But with that, any questions or I take a motion?
I move to confirm the appointment of Brett Nash. I says, the mayor said, I served on the interview panel, and he was just absolutely amazing. He will be a welcome addition to the community. He's excited about being here, and I think everyone that I've talked to is excited about his coming. So with that, I so moved to confirm that appointment.
Second.
Second. Is that any discussion?
Is he here?
So he is not here, and what were, council?
Brett and his wife are working on relocating from Nevada right now, and he will be here at the next council meeting for his swearing-in.
Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And as Mike said, we look forward to seeing him at the next council meeting for the swearing-in. On the agenda item, we had a presentation that was scheduled for the Disability Action Center. Unfortunately, they're under the weather, so we're rescheduling that and postponing it for another time. So the next item is Consent Agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion of the City Council without separate discussion. That and entertain a motion to read the consent agenda by title only.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, that, if you could please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one is a motion to dispense with the reading of the regular meeting minutes of January 14, 2025, and approve them as submitted. Item two, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, number 2011-29291 through 2011-29390, Item three is a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, number 2011-29391 through 2011-29475, totaling $918,224.70. Item four, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, electronic transfers and ADP payroll transfers, totaling $1,714,092.70. Item five, a motion to approve the transfer of sales tax revenue to CIP Reserve Fund for 2024 Q4 in the amount of $416,755. Item six is a motion to accept the Terror View and Crest View Pass contract as complete. Item seven, a motion to authorize a contract with spin for electric scooters and bicycles throughout the city of Pullman, ending December 31, 2025. And finally, item eight, Resolution Number R-02-25, a resolution amending Resolution R-12-13 relating to the rules and procedure of the Pullman City Council and updating the time of regular meetings of the Pullman City Council for February 1 through April 30, 2025.
Do any councilmembers desire to have any items removed from the consent agenda to be discussed separately? Seeing none, I would accept a motion to approve the council agenda.
Move to approve?
Second.
With that, any discussion? Not all those in favor approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we're on to a public hearing related to vacation of a portion of Hopkins Court and Andrus Drive. And with that, we have our city surveyor, Edward Rank Kofir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Sorry, brief technical difficulty. Let's try that again. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. The action before you is to hold a public hearing regarding the petition for the vacation of a portion of Hopkins Court and Andrus Drive submitted by the Port of Whitman County. The area proposed for vacation is located in the Port of Whitman County Industrial Park subdivision number two, as seen on this image. On this next image, the area proposed for vacation, approximately 5,544 square feet, is shown in red. This area is part of an obsolete truck and fire department turnaround from when this portion of rideaway was the terminus of Hopkins Court. The area shaded in green was vacated by Switzer Engineering Laboratories in 2019. The subject property, if the subject property is vacated, a full 60-foot rideaway width for this portion of Hopkins Court and Andrus Drive would still remain. Thus, city staff support the petitioner's vacation request. It has been determined that there are existing public and franchise utilities in this area. And therefore, a utility easement will be retained. In addition, due to the lack of sidewalks along the area proposed for vacation, staff recommend that a pedestrian access easement also be retained. At their November 12, 2024, meeting, the planning commission found that the proposed vacation was consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The City Council passed a resolution on December 17, 2024, that set the date to hold the public hearing on the vacation petition as today's date, January 28, 2025. Public notice of this hearing has been duly given. City code provides that the city be compensated for vacated property at a rate not to exceed the appraised value of the area being vacated. Because the subject rideaway was dedicated less than 25 years ago, the amount to be charged should be 50% of the appraised value, as shown on the attached valuation calculation. The general action requested now of council is to hold a public hearing on said vacation. Do you have any questions?
So first is the public hearing, and then we go to the council. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing for if anybody in the audience that has any comments they'd like to provide related to this as a part of the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to provide comments? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And now we'll go on to the first agenda item, regular agenda. And with that, Edward, if you want to continue?
Thank you again, Mayor and City Council. Regarding the previously discussed petition for the vacation of a portion of Hopkins Court and Andrus Drive submitted by the Port of Whitman County, a public hearing has been held and an ordinance has been prepared for council action. Do you have any questions?
With that, any questions? Okay. If not, I then entertain a motion for approval of the ordinance.
Some of the...
Second.
With that, that, if you could read the ordinance, please?
Yes. It's ordinance number 25-01, an ordinance of the City of Pullman, County of Whitman, Washington vacating a portion of Hopkins Court and Andrus Drive adjacent to lots four and five of the Port of Whitman County Industrial Park subdivision number two.
That, any discussion? Not all those in favor of ordinance 2501? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Next up, we have Jeff Albrecht, our Director of Finance Administrative Services, related to Resolution R-0325.
Good evening. Brought to you tonight is Resolution 325. What this is, a resolution to update our purchase card policies. These were established quite a few years ago. It's been a while since they've been reviewed. So we went ahead, both based off of some suggestions from the state auditor's office as well as just updating some information within the policy. Have updated the policies. Probably the biggest changes you'll see is some changes to the limits in purchase card use, section 1.3, some updates to restrictions in 1.4, and then added a section regarding card holder responsibility and accountability. But basically, what this is, is this will allow us to make sure we comply with the state auditor's office and requirements for purchase card use. Just update some information. And then, in addition, if this is passed, we'll be rolling out some updated training for city staff who use purchase cards. That add answer. Any questions?
Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion?
Move to adopt Resolution Number R-0325?
Second.
That, if you could read the resolution, please?
Resolution Number R-03-25, a resolution adopting purchase card policies for the city of Pullman.
That, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, Wayne Thompson, our Transit Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item before you tonight is a motion to approve a contract for the purchase of three electric bus charging stations from ChargePoint. These will be installed later in the spring in the transit garage. And these will be paired with three new electric buses that will also arrive this spring. As a background for this project, our facility in 2021 was upgraded, went through electrical facility upgrade. We received a new transformer. And the facility received meters and a breaker box capable of hosting eight electric bus chargers. And these will be chargers four, five, and six of that eight charger capacity. This is an active transit CIP project. And as a large purchase in our procurement system over $100,000, we took the purchasing agreement option and have worked with three vendors. And we've chosen to use a nationwide Sourcewell contract and buy directly from ChargePoint. We've been pleased with the ChargePoint products we've had so far. All three of our existing chargers are ChargePoint. The contract that we're entering into has a five-year warranty as well as the onsite inspection, as well as activation, and the cloud-based services that we need for the daily interaction with the system. Following this purchase, the next steps of the project would be the formal design and the install of these chargers. So I'm looking for support of a motion to move forward with this contract with ChargePoint. Happy to answer any questions?
Sorry, any questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion?
A motion accepting the quote from ChargePoint for three electric bus chargers via Sourcewell Contract 042221-CPI.
Second.
Second. With that, any discussion? Yes?
Yeah, I guess this is just a statement of appreciation. Thanks for chasing after the electric buses and supporting its infrastructure.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you very much, Wayne. Our next discussion item, this is something that was requested by Councilmember Weller and Wright related to a discussion of the City Council Work Group. And with that, Councilmember Weller, since you initiated it, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I brought this up last time after some due consideration. I know all of us have been a part of certain work groups outside of our regular committee assignments. It would have been good to have Tremaine here, but, you know, things come up. So from what I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, the current work groups or what was assigned was strategic tourism, housing, bypass, welcoming, repurpose in-town railways, strategic influence and partnerships. And I'll just pause to make sure that's correct.
So yes, there were six.
Okay. After our last budget meeting, I had asked if some of these extra work groups were possibly having, I tried to be as balanced as I could, having some impact on our budget. And that was in the affirmative. I know that some of the work groups have also created some drain, as I've heard, and of course, I can always be wrong, often am, on some staff time as well as creating a sense of stress in the city. In addition, the additional work groups, I know have placed a lot of time constraints. I can only speak for myself, but taking on that extra workload as a council member also creates some challenges. I'm not saying that any of these are not worthy. What I am saying is several of these are either housed in other efforts, such as the welcoming in 2040, which Mr. Mayor had actually been a huge proponent of in 2040, or housing with Councilmember Guido. So I wanted to kind of open it up and see, because I did want to wait until 2025 to discuss this. Seeing that, I know the two that I'm on, which are the bypass and the repurposing in-town railways, there's little at this point that can be done in a committee setting without outside approval from higher powers such as WashDOT or representatives. So with that, I'm going to be quiet because I've already spoken enough.
So Councilmember Wright, I know you seconded this. Do you have any comments at this time?
Well, I would certainly defer to... I felt like we needed to have a little more structure to the work groups so that we had a desired outcome identified to what we were doing. And that wasn't coming. And I won't say that three electeds in a room are difficult to deal with, but who's the one that's going to be in charge? So, you know, that would be the first stumbling block there. And I have been involved in the strategic tourism work group, and that's been ongoing for a while. So we already had a set of norms established for that. But the bypass work group, just really, it's important. We need for it to be productive. And I don't think that we were able to get to that point for a variety of reasons. So I can't speak to the other work groups, but I'm guessing here in comments that we're all kind of feeling the same way.
Councilmember Delara?
Yeah, I guess maybe it sounds like there is an issue with workload. And I wonder if maybe for each group, people can propose like the frequency of meetings. So maybe for bypass and rail banking every quarter? Or maybe for some groups, it'll be every other month? I don't know if maybe that might be something that could be like a happy medium to still have the work groups, but not put a lot of monthly time into them.
The frequency, okay. Councilmember Guido?
Yeah, I have a lot of thoughts on this because I applaud the intent behind it, which is to work on these issues that the community has consistently told us are important to them. And they're looking to their local leaders to make something happen. We do have a certain amount of barriers in front of us on some of these. And I recognize that as it relates to our state representatives. Making them aware of those barriers, I think, continue to be very important. And having a work group that is continuing to identify the need for greater organization, talking to our state representatives on certain issues like the rail banking, I think... like the rail banking, I think we need to continue to put pressure on them that that is an important subject for people. I can speak to the housing group that have a very dedicated group of individuals who care greatly about the issue of housing and are working quite well together. I don't know if Councilmember Delara, who also sits on that, has some other thoughts, but it seems like it's moving along, and we're working on a strategic plan, which is part of our charge, is to come up with a plan for more opportunities for homeownership. I think there's also, I'm sure you're familiar with this, storming, norming, and forming, or forming, now performing. I know there's an order there, but when you put something like this together, there is going to be a certain amount of, you know, just trying to figure it out, and it's not going to necessarily be pretty, trying to figure it out. But I do recognize that it's an additional workload because we really do need staff support on a lot of this. I could speak to the housing group, and having RJ Lott on it has just been invaluable because he is the content expert. So recognize that that also is part of the mix and needs to be part of the mix, and it means further duties and time on the part of the staff.
Councilmember Parks.
Thank you. I echo what Councilmember Guido said about these issues are very important, and it's important for us to make them focal points as part of our goals. What I like about the work groups is that we can have free-form discussions. I feel like in both of mine, which are the same as Nathan's, he had the whiteboard, and one of them covered in like five minutes. I was like, but it's just because of the way we were speaking the very first time. And so that's fun, because we don't often get, we are not often able to get together and speak like that without quorum requirements and things like that. I agree with Councilmember Delara, and I had the same thought about maybe we can just have variable scheduling, because both Nathan's and my, the bypass and the rail repurposing, we actually are, we do have things in the works as far as inviting RTPO to come visit with us and continue to work with our representatives on the rail repurposing. So we, you know, we're thinking of ways to do that, but I do, I did feel constricted by the every month, every month, and I, yeah. So I think if just each work group can, has the ability to decide when they're going to meet, that would be very helpful. But any other inputs appreciated as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerin, do you have any comment? You're the only one that hasn't spoken yet, so I'm giving you first right of refusal.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much to say in addition to what my other council members have said, other than these were the long-term priorities that the people at Pullman said they would like us to focus on when we asked them what would we want the goals and priorities to be for the next two years. So I don't believe, I agree, I don't believe one size fits all with all these committees. Definitely, housing is well-developed, and just the critical work that is needed in the housing area right now, I would like to see that work going. But again, with bypass and railways, maybe like a quarterly meeting schedule. And so I'll agree with the recommendation that each committee should decide their own meeting schedule.
Councilmember Weller.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood. I don't in any way feel that these are not worthy topics. We've talked about that. This is definitely a different way than I feel we've ever dealt with goals, at least since I've been on. And I think it is something that we should be aware. We're in some tight years, and it's put strain on staff. And I think several of us have heard that. So, I mean, I will go along with what the rest of the council feels. I just think, and perhaps, meeting on different time schedules, because there are some, I mean, it sounds like, you know, Megan's and, you know, Pat's, the strategic tourism stuff is raring and doing great, whereas some, I mean, we do have to wait for WashDOT or for representatives to change their mind. I just want us to be aware as we try to take on new, different, challenging tasks, such as this, the timing in line with our budget, in line with staff, and being aware that there is a certain amount of where we can go home at the end of the meeting, they're also taking on quite a bit after we go. And then those experts are having to do research on top of what their job already is. So that's kind of, you know, what I was thinking as I was bringing this up. In my mind, this was a time, especially with new leadership and so on, where we're tight, we learn how to kind of work together, and then once we have a more robust budget, we're able to kind of flourish into new projects. And I think we just jumped into new projects regardless. So in any case, I will go along with what the rest of the group feels, but those were my concerns.
So what I am hearing is for flexibility, for meeting times, but it sounds like at least a quarterly meeting is thinking for a couple of them. Some are going to be, are continued to monthly. I did hear some of the structure and organization as it relates around work group, and so I can work on how can I help provide that support and structure for the areas where there's, where those questions. What I would say is if I could have, in the next two weeks, if members, at least someone from each group, could get back to me on when you want to do those meetings, you know, the frequency, so that we can then make sure that we get that, support that from the staff side and for the support that way. Anything else? Okay. We don't have any new business to come before us. So at this time, we're going to move into executive session. So at this time, the City Council will adjourn to executive session pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1B to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause likelihood of increased price. Second, RCW 42.30.110.1C to consider the minimum price of which real estate will be offered for sale or leased when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of decreased price, providing final action, selling or leasing public property shall be taken in a meeting open to the public. Number three, RCW 42.30.110.1I to discuss with legal counsel representing the city matters relating to agency enforcement action or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency potential litigation concerning, one, litigation that has been specifically threatened to which the agency, the governing body or member acting in official capacity is or likely to become a party. And number two, litigation that the agency reasonably believes may be commenced by or against the agency, the governing body or a member acting on official capacity. When the provision of open, while the provision of Open Public Meeting Act does not apply to discussions relating to interpretation or application of a labor agreement or the portion of a meeting during which the governing body is planning or adopting the strategy or position to take during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiation or grievances or mediation proceedings or reviewing the proposals made during the course of negotiations proceeding, the City Council is announcing its intention to discuss such matters in executive session. The executive session is expected to last approximately 20 minutes. If it becomes necessary to extend the executive session, someone will return to announce the anticipated additional time needed by City Council. The council does not anticipate taking action following the council meeting. It's currently 7:58. We'll start at 8 o'clock in executive session. It's currently 7:58. We'll start at 8 o'clock in executive session.
...
So it's 8:36, call the council meeting back to order. With that, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
So Eric, move. Is there a second? Second, Carla, for a second. With that, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.